...of the Windsocket School Committee as of January 27, 2021 at 7:02 PM. Dr. McGee, roll call, please.
Chairman Borger.
Here.
Vice Chair Burke.
Here.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Here.
Mrs. Costa.
Here.
Mr. Leclerc.
Here.
I would ask you to join me in a moment of silence as we keep our parents, teachers, administrators, and children in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you, and I'll say the pledge, and you can join in. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Notoriani, do we have anyone that has signed up for good and welfare?
One second, Chairman, I got a vote.
Sure. No, we don't. Okay, thank you. Let's go on to recognitions and announcements. Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one announcement this evening. I'm very proud to announce that Windsocket High School chemistry teacher Kalen Mather was named the Channel 10 Golden Apple Award winner recently. The Golden Apple Award winner is, award is given out to a teacher across the state that has either a student or a parent write a letter recommending that the particular teacher receive the award. I'm going to read the letter that was sent to Channel 10 by student Erica Chen. So Erica writes, "Through the course of this year, she has been able to take a subject that requires much more safety precautions and turns it into a class in which we learn in a much more efficient and creative way by using regular household objects. Through distance learning, she's adapted to our surrounding environment and circumstances to better suit our needs as students. On top of that, she goes above and beyond to ensure we understand the material despite how it compares to the traditional curriculum. Through the course of the school year, she has spent time getting to know every single one of her students individually to better suit our needs as a whole. She enjoys working with every single one of us and shares a positive light in the classroom even when there comes a time where sunshine is necessary. She's made the tremendous impact on her students, and we are aware that we can always reach out to her at any time necessary. Personally, I have seen several moments of stress and anxiety, and she's always been supportive to me in whatever I dream of in the hopes I'll succeed in whatever comes to mind. While she takes the time to connect to each one of her students, she has made an immense impact on the student I am now and pushes me to the best I can be, whether it be personally, mentally, or academically. She is one of the best teachers I have ever experienced, and I couldn't be more proud to say that." So again, I'd like to announce Kalen Mather, Windsocket High School chemistry teacher, as the Channel 10 Golden Apple Award winner on January 28 at 6:00 PM. If you tune into Channel 10, you will see her virtual award that was presented to her this past week. So I, and I think Kalen is on this meeting, so I'm not sure if she's here. I know Mr. Henderson said that she was supposed to be attending. Not sure.
I don't see, I don't see her listed.
Okay.
Dr. McGee. Well, let's congratulate her. That's fantastic news.
Yeah, great job.
Good job, Kalen. Well done, well done.
Very good.
I will make a motion to receive and place on file the recognition and announcement. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, I heard second from Mrs. Costa, Vice Chair Burke, and Mrs. Leclerc.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's have a roll call vote, because I can't see. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, I will make a motion to approve the January 13, 2021 open session minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Any additions, deletions, corrections to the minutes? Dr. McGee, please.
Chairman Borger. Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, we'll go on to the consent agenda, and I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Does anybody, does any school committee person want to take anything out of the consent agenda to, for further discussion? Hearing none. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, we'll go into your report, Dr. McGee. So I'll hear the superintendent's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to start with personnel. We recently hired two employees out of our local budget, both on step one. One was a secretary, is a secretary at Globe Park Elementary, and the other is a personal care assistant at Globe Park Elementary as well. We also hired, we also have provided stipends to 13 staff across the district for a variety of coaching and after-school type of Title I supports for our students. I'm going to talk briefly about the school reopening update. Just to let everyone know, we are, we're continuing unfortunately to close classrooms across the district as students and staff test positive. We're doing our very best to limit it to just closing those, those particular pods for those classrooms. In some instances, like we had to do most recently, we had to close both of your citizens' campus. They'll be reopening on Friday of this week. But again, we're doing our very best, our nurses are doing their very best to monitor and make sure that we are, you know, quarantining based on the recommendations from the Department of Health whenever it's necessary. I also want to report that the ninth graders returned in a hybrid model to school this week on Tuesday, and on February 2nd, which is Tuesday, next Tuesday, the 10th, 11th, and 12th graders will return to the high school in a hybrid model as well. With respect to athletics, our high school athletic teams, our winter teams, including girl basketball as well as girls' track are starting, they're seasons, they've started their practices. Basketball has started with, with games. I would also let the committee know and the, and the community know that the basketball home games are being livestreamed. Had a conversation with our athletic director, Mrs. Giordano, and she indicated to me that they are being livestreamed. So, you know, people can access those. We can, we can get that information out. I know that Mr. Henderson and his leadership team have been sending out the links to those, to those games as well, so we will make sure that we get that out to everyone. Further, with athletics, fans and spectators are not permitted to attend the games at the gym at the high school. The only time that spectators will be allowed will be on, on senior nights. And for those of you that aren't, aren't aware of what that is, that's when, usually during the course, the latter end of the season, we spotlight our graduating seniors and celebrate their accomplishments, and their families, you know, typically attend, and it's a, it's a nice activity. So that would be the only time that spectators would be permitted to attend those games. Third, I want to talk briefly about the contract negotiations. As, as you know, the Windsocket Teachers Guild, the local 1137, as well as our paraprofessional contracts, all expire on June 30th. So we've been in the process thus far of reviewing the existing contract, and we have two teams that have met so far. We had a team that was comprised of our principals and assistant principals who met with our attorney, Sarah Rapport, who was going to be leading those negotiations. And we also had a second meeting with another group of directors, central office personnel. So though we've had those two meetings, we're scheduling a third meeting with the directors next Friday, next Friday morning, and the hope is, is at the conclusion of that meeting, we would have put together our, our thoughts and our proposals on the teachers' contract, and then the next part of the process is that information will then be presented to the actual negotiating team prior to our beginning the official negotiations with the teachers. So that is where we stand with respect to the contract negotiation preparation. I think we're, we're moving along nicely. We've had some really good conversations, and I'm excited to get that information to the negotiating team so that we can begin the official negotiations as soon as possible. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Dr. McGee, are you planning to then set up the meeting with the negotiation team? Is that going to be in late February or early March? And then the, the meeting with the union, is that going to be in March as well?
Yeah, I, I believe that we're, we're slating the end of February for our negotiating team to sit down, and then soon after that, in early March, I would like to begin the negotiations with the teacher guild.
Has Mr. Stewart been apprised of our timeline? Am I make sense to do so?
Yeah, I, I meet with, with Mr. Stewart and Mrs. Carey weekly. I'm going to be meeting with them tomorrow, and I have shared the information that we've had those, those meetings thus far, and we'll talk further about that when I meet with them tomorrow as well.
Very good. Now, does any, does any school committee member have any questions or comments for Dr. McGee?
I do. I did hear you say that the 10th, 11th, and 12th graders are going to be going in starting Tuesday for the hybrid model, but what about the ninth graders? I apologize, I missed about the ninth graders.
So the ninth graders, their, their first day was, was...
Dr. McGee, you're frozen.
Can you repeat yourself, Dr. McGee? We couldn't hear you.
Yes. So Tuesday of this week was the first day that the ninth graders returned.
Okay, I appreciate that. I just wasn't sure, because I didn't, I didn't hear about the ninth graders, so I wasn't sure if they already started, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments, questions for Dr. McGee? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the superintendent's report. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, we'll go into the subcommittee reports. We've had one subcommittee meeting since the last meeting, and that was technology, so I'll turn this over to Vice Chair Burke and Mrs. Costa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The technology committee, myself and Mrs. Costa and the other members met briefly the other night, and Mr. Notoriani is going to tell us some of the things we discussed. I pass it on to him.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. So the technology subcommittee met last evening. We talked about a technology overview. Ninety-nine percent of all of the teacher iPads and Chromebooks have been distributed. We're at the tail end of the process in terms of getting the equipment out, and the staff have been very pleased and thankful to the committee and to Dr. McGee and the administration for providing the new devices. We then talked about potential leasing of Chromebooks moving forward in the future. As the committee is aware, we've been spending chunks of money here and there out of our capital budget in order to acquire the necessary equipment. Moving forward, where Mr. Perrier is looking at setting up a lease structure where we have steady, consistent payments and a, a consistent upgrade schedule for our technology needs rather than us having to address things on the fly, which, as he's wisely indicated, would be financially beneficial to the district. We then moved on to data and state reporting. The March 1 snapshot report is coming due, if the committee recalls. That's the snapshot that the state takes, which determines our state funding based on the funding formula that's in place. We then talked about communications and the need to release an RFP in the very near future to update our communications platforms. In particular, we're looking at the websites, email, text, and classroom communication tools, and we also talked briefly about our transition to a new telephone system starting July 1. We then talked about the enrollment and registration process, and our goal is to move that to an online portal starting July 1, and it would make it easier than what we're currently using for the forms that are downloaded on the website. And lastly, we talked about the work order system, which was a brief status update. There were down to approximately 63 work orders as of yesterday. Last item was the next meeting date, which would be February 23 at 6:00 PM.
Very good. I think that covers it all, unless, Mrs. Costa, is there anything that you think you need to add?
Nope, I'm pretty sure you guys covered it all.
Mr. Notoriani, let me ask, let me ask you, thank you, Vice Chair Burke and Mrs. Costa. Can you help me understand CVS's role to date in providing Chromebooks or laptops or iPads to the district?
Well, I can't pinpoint the exact dollar amount. I believe CVS contributed a significant portion of the funding to acquire Chromebooks for our pre-K and grade-one classrooms at the conclusion of the last fiscal year. So I think it was the, probably around June 2020, maybe a little earlier than that and a little later than that, they, along with the, correct if I'm wrong, Mr. Perry, I think it was the Rhode Island Foundation, do I have the correct foundation, provided monies to, to purchase those devices. And off the top of my head, I want to say it was approximately 500 to 600 Chromebooks, which completed our one-to-one initiative at the elementary level.
Okay. Now, as I recall, just the number that sticks in my head, that was around $150,000? Is that about right, what CVS contributed to, to our, you know, to the assets that we're using?
That sounds right, Chairman. I'd have to...
I'm not looking for a specific, but I think it was in that ballpark. Now, obviously, we provided, the district provided a heck of a lot more Chromebooks than pre-K and first, right?
Correct.
And how much, roughly, and that would be for all the other grades, and how much of, how much of that was from, whether it was CARES Act or that was from other sources? Roughly.
Chairman, I'd have to defer to Mr. Perrier. If you recall, Mr. Perrier, off the top of your head, what the CARES Act money was, I don't recall.
It was, it was significant. A lot of the purchases that we did this year, and actually going into last year, were funded by the CARES Act. I'd say we were, off the top of my head, probably about $1.5 million in Chromebooks expenditures.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
One and a half million.
Maybe even a little bit better than that, but once you factor in iPads and the projectors and the Chromebooks, you know, upon further reflection, it's probably closer to 2 million.
So we received roughly $2 million in funding for, for our digital assets that are used in the school by our teachers and by our students, and that came in, and that 2 million did not come through City Hall. Am I correct?
Absolutely, 100%, 100% correct with that.
I just want to make sure I got that straight in my mind, because, just to, just to keep the numbers together, but thank you, thank you for that. We're changing the phone systems. Is there something wrong with the phone systems? Or is, are we getting a better deal? Why we make, because that's going to be a fairly decent expense to do that.
Yeah, we're probably going to be saving in the ballpark of $5,000 a month on phones once this new contract gets rolling.
Why is that? Just phones being fixed?
Because their charge is less than the other guys. That's really what it comes down to.
Is it, is it like a can with a string, Mr. Notoriani? Is that why? Is that what's going to go from your office to my office?
To, to, it's an improved cannon string.
That's what I was waiting to hear. Wonderful. I'm looking forward to our conversations on the new phone system. Okay?
Yes.
You've really caught up on your work orders. I mean, you, weren't you in the hundreds not that long ago?
Yes.
Seems to me like you really, your, your team has really done a great job.
That would be the technicians and the staff. They do an excellent job. We've got a fantastic team.
And how much are you expecting to save on leasing, Mr. Perrier, the Chromebooks?
I, I don't know if there's going to be a savings. There will be a more consistent expense to our general fund year over year.
Right.
I think leasing is more expensive than purchasing outright, but the positive is, at the end of the three years, we will now be able to refresh the fleet. Also, by splitting it up into three separate leases, we'll be able to address our needs on a more readily, easily basis.
I think refreshing the fleet is going to be very important, because as technology keeps improving, we're going to find ourselves in obsolete equipment in very short period of time, so that's good. Anyone else have any comments for Mr. Notoriani, Mr. Perrier, Vice Chair Burke, or Mrs. Costa? I'll make a motion then to receive and place on file the technology update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, we'll go into conferences and discussions. I'll ask Mr. Perrier to give us his financial update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the school committee this evening is the November 2020 fiscal update. Few of the financial highlights on the revenue side, taxes levied from local government units is projected to be $250,000 under budget, and this is the money that is coming from the city, the city's contribution on a yearly basis. The additional $250,000 of funding that was asked for was not approved by the city, so we're being funded at our fiscal year 20 level. At this time, rental income is projected to be under budget by $200,000. Due to the pandemic, there just hasn't been much request and need for building usage this year. And finally, in revenues, the Medicaid reimbursement projected has been reduced due to reduction of billable services for the fiscal year. On the expenditure side, currently, our salaries are projected to be $253,000 under budget at this time. The substitute salary line is currently projected to be $667,000 under budget. It's been difficult to secure substitutes for in-person learning due to the pandemic, which has led to a fiscal savings there. We've also received some funding to offset our sub-expense through a small ride from grant. Also, due to the move to classrooms being fully virtual, there's been no need for substitutes, which has lead to an additional savings as well. Regular overtime is projected to be $550,000, $515,000 over budget. This is due to the period that we were paying double time for 1137 employees. Normal overtime rules are now in effect district-wide. Medical expenses are currently $150,000 under budget. This last monthly update, we have increased the projection. It appears that our weekly billings are now returning to a pre-pandemic level, seeing bills more in the $200,000 to $300,000 range, which is more in line what we've seen before the pandemic. We'll continue to monitor this account closely going forward, but as a reminder, we do have OPEB funds that we can cut into if the expenses continue to grow, as well as a medical reserve account. At this time, no money has been reserved for future OPEB expenses. This is leading to a $400,000 savings. Once we get some more clarity on our medical expenses, can make a decision down the road as to whether we'll be funding additional money into our OPEB account this year or we'll keep that fiscal savings. Speech therapists are $109,000 over budget, and this has been due to the need to reach out to inside, to outside contractors to fill positions that we do have budgets for but are unable to fill at this time. The district is projected to be $329,000 over budget on tuitions to other districts. This has been due to the increase of Windsocket students choosing to attend other districts to pursue other educational pathways. And finally, the Windsocket Education Department continues the bookkeeping process of moving posted general fund expenditures to our approved CARES Act Supplemental Impact Aid Fund. There's really only about $150,000 left worth of journal entries, so we should be peeling that expense off the general fund this month, once we close out that Supplemental Impact Aid Fund. That's about $150,000 of savings that we're going to be looking at going into the next fiscal update. And one final note on here that I just received information on today, it appears the state is going to be utilizing some of the CARES Act money that was received at the state level, and they're going to be applying that towards the statewide transportation. So the first invoice came in with a credit on it. I don't have a handle on exactly what we're saving, but going forward, we should see a reduction in the budget line item for statewide transportation. If anybody has any questions, I'd love to answer them at this time.
I mean, right now, we're looking at a projected surplus of some 790,000, plus you've got to add back the 150,000 that you were speaking about, so that may, gets us to 940, and that's not even comprehending the savings on transportation due to additional state funding. So if everything holds, holds the line, we should be in decent shape as we continue on during the year, even though we may have additional expenditures that may pop up due to COVID and the like. That's what I see in, in this report. So as we go along, you're going to find that a lot of our accounts, even though you had a budget amount way back when, when we approved the budget, but those were estimates, and now, as the actuals come in, we're even getting more or less revenues and more or less expenditures, but so far, we have not been negatively impacted. So the district is in good financial shape right now.
So far, so far, so good, Mr. Chairman.
That's what I see. Any, any additional comments, questions for Mr. Perrier? Vice Chair Burke, please.
Thank you. Mr. Perrier, you mentioned that the out-of-district budget was over budget because of the number of students that are opting to go to other districts. Now, do you mean other public school districts? Are we losing students to other public school, not, not, not specialized schools?
Absolutely. It's other, it's students choosing to go to other public schools to pursue pathways offered by those institutions.
Do, do we have, that's not school choice, is it? Do we have school choice?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that's it.
Actually, Mr. Burke, I, I could, I could add a little bit more to that, if you don't mind. So that, that has been a, a, a very serious bone of contention on my part. You know, Mr. Perrier and the other directors know, this, this past summer was a very challenging summer with respect to losing a lot of students, a lot of high school students to other districts, especially Cumberland. So if you recall, when Commissioner Ken Wagner was the, was the Rhode Island Commissioner, he was, he was the commissioner that started the, the, this opportunity for students across the state to attend other high schools that were CTE-approved or accredited, and for example, take certain pathways that either the, the home district either offered or didn't offer. So we have lost quite a few, especially this past summer, we've lost quite a few. To try to counter that, I've had meetings with Mr. Henderson and his leadership team to look at our programs, because here in Windsocket, we have the Career and Technical Center. Um, because here in Windsocket, we have the Career and Technical Center. We don't have any high school CTE programs. Cumberland does. So while we have a, you know, a very robust career center, um, students are, are choosing other pathways that we don't provide here in Windsocket. So I, I, as, as, as I said, the meetings that I had with Mr. Henderson, the other leaders at the high school, was for them to look at the, the pathways that we currently have at Windsocket High School to bolster them and to look at creating high school CTE programs that will be able to compete with surrounding districts that we're losing students to.
Well, I could also put insight to that as well because I have a student that actually did transfer over to CTE pathways because of that reason exactly. Is there something maybe that we could try to implement to make it more so, so we're pulling students from other districts as opposed to people pulling students from our district? Is there something we could do to make it a little bit more structural, I guess, for kids or like to make them wanna come on over to, to our career and bulk tech school? Is there a way we can expand it somehow?
Yes, good question. So with respect to the career center, uh, Mr. Webb does a great job of recruiting students from other districts. They work really hard at that. Um, but the charge that I presented to the high school was the, the CTE programming and, and providing those types of programming at the high school that students are, are going to other communities to receive. So they're working on it. Um, and they're, you know, they'll, they'll be reporting out uh to me, um, and then I, I will certainly report out to the school committee um as we proceed through the spring.
That sounds good. Thank you.
Vice Chair Burke, Vice Chair Burke.
Dr. McGee, could you explain for the people listening, um, what CTE stands for?
Sure. That's, that's career and technical education.
And my second question, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so it's career and technical education. We do have a career center, but obviously um, some of the careers they're, they're seeking elsewhere. Um, so when a student goes out of district, we pay a perpu- the perpugal cost. We also provide transportation?
Yes, we do.
Question.
Mr. Leclerc.
Is there an offset in the CTE from other communities into our community that we're not seeing in the, in budget, in the budget?
So, we're, I'm, I'm sorry, Brad, I don't wanna interrupt you. I, is, is your question, Mr. Leclerc, are, are we, is Windsocket receiving students from other districts for the CTE programs that we're, that we have here? So, so yes, so we, so not, not at the high school per se, because we don't have CTE programs at our high school that are um accredited um by the Department of Education, but we do receive students from um local communities at our career center, Barville, North Smithfield, and Cumberland. So we do receive a certain amount of revenue from those districts whose students elect to attend, you know, one of the 11 programs that we offer at our career center.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Perrier, where is that, where is that revenue uh recorded in our report?
That's a, that's the local revenue, and that's a tuition from other districts. Object 41, 41321. It's like the third line down on the report.
Just in case you wanna refer to that, there's two separate lines. One is the revenues we receive, and the other is the expenditures that we have to pay out for our stu- students going to other districts. Dr. McGee, were you, were you saying something?
No, I, I was, thank you.
Okay. Any, anyone else? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file, uh, the financial update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee roll call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next I'll ask Dr. Sullivan and Ms. Morel to give us the special education update.
Hi.
Hi, Dr. Sullivan.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Um, some good news. We were one of two districts in the state of Rhode Island that were chosen by RIDE to participate in a program called SET, which was developed by the University of Kansas. SET stands for Special Educator Technology-Based Training of Trainers for Success Grant Project. They always seem to come up with these long names. Um, so what the program is intended to do is we found out that the students on alternate assessment were really having trouble with um the distance learning. So we're trying to develop resources for those students. So during this first year, Dawn and I, Dawn Morel and I will be selecting approximately six teachers, and we're going to evaluate um these different resources that are already available. We're not gonna create new resources, but we're gonna um examine the ones that are already available. And then we're gonna um develop a library of those. And over the next four years, we're gonna be working on this project. We will um start bringing in other states to evaluate with us. And then we will have the people that start with us, those six people, start training our other teachers to work with these um programs. They are hoping um that eventually this will turn into a resource for teachers that's nationwide. Um, so it was a big honor to be chosen to be one of the first districts to participate in this. Next year, they're gonna ask um two other states to join us, and then they're gonna try to build on that.
Okay.
And you said that you're gonna be choosing six teachers. How are you gonna go about uh with the choosing of them?
So what we will have to do is um, we will advertise, um, we also, we have to do that and go through the interview process. And we're gonna try to pick, we have to pick teachers that are already teachers of students with significant cognitive disabilities. And out of those, there'll be an interview process, um, and we'll choose from that. We're gonna try to get ones at different levels, so we have some in the younger grades and going all the way up through the um transition program.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke.
Quick question, uh, listening to Ms. Sullivan, Dr. Sullivan, and also what I read today. Does it, is there a grant associated with this?
Yes, yes. So university. No, it's no cost for us, and they're expecting that there'll be a stipend for the teachers that participate.
Excellent. Do we know how much?
No, we don't know how much yet. We just had our first meeting last week.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Very good.
Yes, congratulations on being selected. Uh, I can't wait uh for you to get going into this, and this is gonna be great for our teachers. So fantastic.
Yes, congratulations.
Is there anyone, any other school committee member would like to address Dr. Sullivan on, on, on her report or any issues regarding special ed? No. Uh, then I might, I make a motion to receive and place on file the special education update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee roll call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Uh, we don't have any unfinished business. We have one item in new business. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve uh the Prepare Rhode Island School Counseling Grant. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm very happy to announce that the Windsocket Education Department, specifically Windsocket High School, was awarded a three-year grant um from, from the Department of Education. It's a Prepare Rhode Island School Counseling uh Grant. The reason I bring this to the committee is because there is a fiscal impact uh of, through the grant, and I just wanted to, to discuss the grant itself, what it means for the high school, and then talk about the fiscal impact that it would have um on the district. You have two links on your agenda. The first link, one link is, is an informational link, and the second link is the fiscal uh budgetary impact. So I'm gonna go to the, to the informational link first. And I'll just give you, I'm not gonna go through the entire document, but I'll just give you an overview of, of what, what this grant is, and again, what it means for Windsocket High School. So, uh, the Department of Education has um, is, it has provided grants to just a handful of school districts. It was a competitive grant, and Windsocket High School, as I said, applied for it and received it. Um, and the grant is a school counseling uh grant. It's a three-year grant. So what we would be receiving would be um a school counselor at Windsocket High School, guidance counselor. This guidance counselor would not necessarily have a caseload. When I say caseload, um, the, the current guidance counselors that we have at the high school are, are responsible for a certain um number of students, and it's, it's typically done um alphabetically. So, um, so they, they see a certain number of students. This position would be um a guidance position, but this person would be responsible for a, a variety of, of, of other student support um opportunities uh throughout the school. They, they would be working uh with the administration, with the guidance department um on things such as ILPs, which are individual um learning plans for students in grades six through 12. Um, it's something that, that we've, we instituted about three years ago. Um, this person would be overseeing the process at the high school. This person would also uh be responsible for a variety of other diploma plus credentials. And when I say diploma plus credentials, I'm talking about, I mean, you can actually refer to the, to the, um, to the first link. Uh, we have work-based learning courses through our, our career center. Uh, we have career preparation courses that we provide our students. We have dual enrollment courses, which means we have students that are enrolled in Windsocket High School, but are also enrolled and are taking college-level courses that once they ultimately graduate, they'll receive college credit, uh whether it be uh CCRI or URI um, or et cetera. They would also be um working closely with the advanced placement courses that we uh provide our students at the high school. We're always looking to increase the number of AP courses that we offer our students, as well as um, expanding the pool of students that access those AP courses. Um, that would be certainly a goal of, of this, um, of this grant. So there would be a variety of um, of, of positions that this person would be, would be involved in outside of just having a, a straight um caseload. Um, as I said, it's a three-year grant, so the breakdown of, of the uh, of the cost to the district would be, and this is on the second um, uh sheet that you have. So the first year of the grant would be next year. Um, that first year, RIDE would be paying um seven, uh 100% up to um 75,000, a $75,000 position. So, um, if you look at how uh Mr. Perrier put the fiscal analysis together, it's based on step five. So we, we're, we're assuming we, we might bring somebody in, you know, the middle of the road, step five is approximately $88,160, including benefits. So that's what we used to, um, to establish the baseline of what the, what the estimated cost would be to the district. So for the first year, the cost to the district, which would be again, next year, would be $13,136. The second year of the grant, uh, the district would be responsible for 50% of the salary, which would be $45,093. And then in the third year, the district would be responsible for 70% of the salary, which would be $64,557. Um, I, I want the committee to know that the fourth year is an option for the district. So while the grant is good for three years in terms of the funding that we would receive from RIDE, if at the end of the third year, we decide that we want to continue uh with this position, uh, then the, the total cost of the district would be a 30% difference from that third year. So it would actually only cost us 30% more beyond that third year, because we'd be paying 70% uh during the third year of the grant to begin uh in, uh, to begin with. So the, the total life of the three-year grant uh for the district is uh $270,000. 147,000 of that would be through the grant, so while um the, the district would be, be paying only 122,000. So that's the breakup of the cost versus, of the district versus the Department of Education um during the three-year lifespan of the grant. Um, so that, that's the, that's the, the information regarding the position itself. Um, and, and the, the high school, along with central office, would be creating the um, the job description, and we would be collaborating with RIDE, with the uh, uh, with the Prepare Rhode Island School Counseling Organization to put that um job description together. We would post it uh this year, and it would, again, it would be for, for next year. So I'd be happy to answer any questions any other members of the school committee might have.
I'd like to ask you, Dr. McGee, what are the goals uh that you see, that you wanna establish for this person? How do you, how do you determine whether or not 122,000 was worth it?
So ultimately, the goal here is to increase our graduation rate. And, you know, we've had this conversation many, many times. Um, you know, there are a lot of different things that go into um improving your graduation rate. Uh, one of those is providing opportunities at the high school level for students to be successful. And this person, uh, part of, part of the, the role of this person would be to be working with students um through their ILPs. And the ILP is, is, is a, is a plan that students create that, that really maps out their high school career and, and beyond as well. So this person would be working very closely with students um in that area. And the hope would be that that's one component of, you know, the, the, a, a, a successful student ultimately graduating from Windsocket High School. So that would, that's, that's probably the largest goal, and the other, the others are again, to, to improve and to increase opportunities for our students through the advanced course network, which, as I described, the work-based learning, um, the career prep courses, the dual enrollment courses, and the advanced placement courses all fit within that. So it would really be um a position that would, would be solely dedicated to ensuring our students are, are meeting success and are being pushed beyond where they are, because oftentimes, um, you know, and rightfully so, we, we look to, to, to move up our, our most-at-risk students, right? We work really hard at that. This is an opportunity as well to push those students who are excelling at the high school.
How many students do you see on this counselor uh working with during, during year one, year two, year three?
Uh, that's hard to tell in terms of like, they, they wouldn't necessarily have a caseload per se. They would just be working with, with any and all students in, in those particular areas. Um, so it wouldn't be a specific caseload that they would have. It would be as many students as possible.
Okay. Any additional questions for uh Dr. McGee?
Mr. Chairman.
Um, Mr. Leclerc.
Uh, I'm assuming she's, she'd be working hand-in-hand with the guidance councils itself. That's how, where the references would come from. I mean, cause you've got a lot of students at the high school. I can't imagine she'd be available for all of them, so there must be some priority to that.
There, there are, you know, and when you look at the, the um, the ideal ratio, uh, the, the School Counselors Association, they have a ratio of, of the number of counselors per the number of students. Uh, there aren't many schools, high schools in the state that meet that. I think it's, it's one counselor to every 250 students. Um, and I can tell you, we, we're not meeting that at, at the high school, nor are we meeting that at the middle school. Um, so, you know, so this person would be working closely with uh their, the, the counselors at the high school. They would also be working um with counselors at the middle school, because another part of this position is, is to uh improve the transition from middle school to high school as well. So, so this person would really have a multifaceted role and would be working with really a, a wide range of educators.
Okay. Now, is this gonna get rid of another teacher from a classroom?
No, this, this is in addition to what we currently have.
Okay, excellent.
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke.
Thank you. Um, so we're adding a guidance counselor who will not be handling students. But this person will oversee several areas that you mentioned. Aren't those areas already being overseen by somebody?
So, uh.
Counselors oversee the AP program and the ILPs? And if that's the case, and, and I know you're saying, well, we wanna free them up, maybe we should be hiring an extra guidance counselor. we should be hiring an extra guidance counselor and dividing up the student load better so that the guidance counselors can also deal with all these programs. This person seems to have a different position that, I don't know, that might not be helping the overall load and guidance.
So, I'm sorry, Mr. Burke.
I think that's it.
So this particular grant, the parameters are very specific in that this person isn't, is not like your typical guidance counselor. So while we're adding a guidance counselor and this person may see students, they primarily are not going to just see and counsel students as our existing counselors do. That's not to say that our existing counselors aren't doing some of this work now. They are, which is really spreading them quite thin, as you can imagine, you know, with the number of students we have at the high school. It's very difficult for them to balance, you know, meeting with their students, you know, regularly. And then in addition to that, focusing on some of these areas. So this would be an opportunity for us to bring someone in that would be just focusing on these areas. The other counselors would still be a part of that process and they would certainly, you know, have the knowledge of what's happening and they would certainly provide their input in terms of these other programs and initiatives. But this person would really sort of be taking the lead in coordinating it.
Mr. Chairman, follow-up question?
Always, please.
Is this position, are you in position?
Yes.
And after this person will be here for three years, aren't we obligated to keep this person after three years?
No, we're not. So the first day of the fourth year is the tenure year. So if we chose not to, we would make that decision during the course of year number three.
But I, Dr. McGee, I do follow up with what Vice Chair Burke has said. If we hired a fourth or a fifth or an additional counselor, isn't that more productive for the district? Because then you would have a spreading of the workload and that person would most likely we would be keeping. We wouldn't have to make a decision in the fourth year.
Well, I think that gets...
Mr. Chairman?
Maybe I'm missing on...
I think that gets a little deeper into kind of where we are right now. So this grant, so this isn't 100% of the district's fiscal responsibility. If we chose to consider adding a guidance counselor at the high school, that's a part of a greater conversation in terms of the needs of the district, to be honest. If I, you know, if I, while there certainly is need for, you know, more guidance counselors, there's just as much of a need for social workers, probably more of a need for social workers throughout the district. So we wouldn't be having this conversation if it weren't for the grant that we received through RIDE. So that's really, so to add another guidance counselor, while it would be great, I don't know that it would be prudent right now in terms of what are the overall needs of the entire district. But this provides us with an opportunity right now to add that person at a limited cost to the district to see how it's working because we would certainly want to evaluate the effectiveness of this position. As you, you know, as you said earlier, what would the goals be? If we find that we're meeting those goals, then yes, then we would strongly consider keeping this position beyond the three years. If, you know, at the end of three years, we find that the position was not that successful, well, then we might, you know, consider not extending it beyond the third year.
Well, if it doesn't work, we're certainly not going to extend it.
Right.
Using your own words. It's not working.
Exactly.
At the same token, you could also transition that to a guidance counselor if it didn't work, so.
Also, how do you make the decision on who you choose?
It would be like the interview process, like it would be advertised and people would interview for it. I would have to check with the Department of Ed because they want to be a part of the process, the interview process. So it would be advertised as if we were just, we were adding another position. It would be a year-to-year position, however, or the position would be for the duration of the grant, so it would be a three-year. And then at the end of the third year, we would make the determination as to whether or not it would be a permanent position.
So we would be interviewing for someone that's going to be committed for three years?
Yes.
Come in for one year and then decide to leave? Any other thoughts, questions for Dr. McGee?
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Kepiscus, please.
I do have a couple of questions. I've spoken to Dr. McGee before about the need for additional student counselors and I know, school counselors, and I know we're not discussing that, that's a broader issue. But in addition to the caseloads, we also have, we're not meeting state-recommended or school counselor recommended ratios for amount of time spent on administrative work versus amount of time actually spent counseling students. And I harp on that every opportunity I get to bring it to people's attention because especially when our students come back this year, whatever year they come back, they're going to be struggling and that needs even going to be greater than it was before. So I just want to make sure I put that out there. But I also want to ask, there's reference in the printout you gave us to the Prepare RI program. And I'm familiar with the Prepare RI program because we sit on the RICAC, Rhode Island State, Rhode Island Special Education Advisory Council, which is the state version of our CELEC. And I could tell you, I just want to throw this out there, they don't have a real, they're not doing a real good job with reaching out to 100% of our students. They're reaching out to the upper echelon. They're not doing a great job reaching out to our special ed students. They really don't have appropriate programs. And every time I ask that question at a RICAC meeting, they all look at each other and we don't really get anywhere. And with our numbers currently showing us, I just did it before the meeting, we're currently at 26.15% special education in our district. So I can tell you that that 25% of our, 26% of our students are really not going to be served by this grant and might be better served, I know it's a larger conversation, by additional school counselors. And I understand that this grant is probably not aimed at those kids and that's part of the state's problem, that you're not aiming at those kids. But I just want to make sure that information's out there for everyone as well. And you can tell me if I'm wrong, Dr. McGee, but I don't think I am.
I have to agree with you, Ms. Kepiscus. Absolutely.
I think you're correct, Mrs. Kepiscus. I think one of the things that we have to our advantage is we're going to be creating the roles and responsibilities with the Department of Ed. So I think we may have a little bit more latitude with respect to some of the roles and responsibilities that this person will have. So I think that would be an opportunity for us to try to be more inclusive, I think is really, you know, what I think what we're all looking to do and I think it's what you're talking about. I think we have the ability to do that as we put this job description together. We'll certainly have the Special Education Department. Dr. Sullivan and Mrs. Morell will absolutely be a part of putting, you know, if the committee approves, will be a part of putting this job description together.
Anyone else? Dr. McGee, roll the ball.
Are we broken on this tonight?
Yes.
We are voting on it.
What, 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 you object, Vice Chair Burke?
Well, I still, I still have some questions and I don't want to necessarily vote no. Mrs. Kepiscus raised some concerns I think we should think about. I'm not sure I really see it being to our advantage.
Is there a way maybe we could hold off and maybe vote for this next time?
Mrs. Costa, I wasn't finished.
I apologize.
Mrs. Costa, you should direct all your questions to the chair and then I will give you the floor, but right now it's Vice Chair Burke who has the floor.
I apologize about that.
Vice Chair Burke.
So I'm just fully informed of how this really works and it works to our advantage. Yes, it would be wonderful to have one person deal with all these things, but there are things that are dealt with already and maybe if the problem is student, course load of students to guidance counselors, I'm not sure. If we're going to spend this money, if this grant paid for 100%, I'm all for it. We have a fiscal connection to it now and I wonder if we're spending our fiscal money in the best possible way, so.
Do you suggest tabling this or do you want a work session? What do you propose? Just to get more information.
I would like to table it and maybe we can be provided a little bit more information.
Have a comment first, Chairman?
Ms. Leclerc. Ms. Leclerc.
You're all set, Mr. Burke?
I'm all done, yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. I understand Ms. Kepiscus' rationale, but I also believe that there's another 74% that's this is going to affect supposedly. As she stated, it was the state's, it's a state issue that they're not funding it the way they should according to this grant. So it's incumbent upon us to see, do the best we can for our students. First year's 100%, not really in that sense, $75,000, but you're affecting 75% of, I don't know, how many students do we have? 2,600? I'm not even sure. So that'd be a big hit to help these individuals, as Ms. Kepiscus also said, when we come back from this at some point, there's going to be a lot of issues. So I mean, if our counselors are taxed now, that extra counselor to help alleviate some issues and maybe guide those students in a better way, might be something that's something to look at also, regardless of the cost factor, I mean, with the cost factor included, we have to take that into consideration. But it will be a large amount of student population that will eventually be helped, we hope, if it works.
At the end of the day, this one person with a grant and he comes, he or she comes in, I don't know how many, that was my question, is I don't know how many students will be aided, especially as we progress towards vaccinations and now kids are coming back in full in person. And maybe, as Ms. Leclerc seems you're suggesting, and we've got to look at our budget and say, all right, and what are the needs for social workers, et cetera, vis a vis the cost? I think that's part of this exercise. So do you think we should be tabling this until we get more information or is the committee ready to vote on this?
Mr. Chairman? You can take this after first.
Listen, Mrs. Costa, I don't see you, that's why. You're just a blank.
That's okay, I apologize, I'm in the car. I just wanted to know, like, I do agree too with Vice President, Vice Chairman Burke that maybe a little information is a little bit more required. I do, in the long run, think it will be beneficial to our school department to have this extra person as a counselor, but I do agree that maybe we do need to get a little bit more information before we take a full vote if we're all still kind of unsure of how this process will work.
Mr. Chairman? Ms. Chairman? That's me, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, McGee, I'm sorry.
Yes, that's okay, I'm here.
I'm looking for words.
I'm here.
Way to go, there we go.
Mary Capirelli is on this, in this meeting from the high school and Mary is the assistant principal at the high school. She wrote the grant. So I don't know if, you know, if you have questions that maybe you could direct towards her, she might be able to answer some of your more specific questions. If that'll help. Because there is somewhat of a time limit on this grant. So not that we have to necessarily come to an answer this evening, but there might be some questions that she may be able to answer this evening that you won't have to necessarily wait for.
I guess my thought is, if we need more information, that's too vague. I think what information do we want Dr. McGee and his team to provide us so then we can make an educated decision as to what we're going to do? I don't know what more do we do that you'd like to see, Mr. Burke and Mrs. Costa and all of us, Mrs. Kepiscus and Mr. Leclerc? What do we need, what else do we need? I think it's important if we need to make a good vote and make a good decision, then what information would you like to see?
Mr. Chair? It's Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yeah, okay, I see you.
If I may, if Ms. Capirelli's on the call, I guess what I want to know is, I read the handout, but can you describe to me in more layman's terms and not educational lingo exactly what this person is going to be doing? They're not going to be doing guidance counseling, they're not going to be doing scheduling, not necessarily college counseling. What exactly will their duties be?
So, thank you, Ms. Kepiscus, Chairman, Superintendent McGee and the rest of the school committee members here. I'm excited to talk about this initiative because I think that this is a real opportunity for us. So though we are hiding, we'll be hiring a guidance counselor and under the grant funded partially by RIDE, this person would have a very focused task, right? So they would be focusing on increasing opportunities for our kids, starting with the middle school, really starting with our ninth graders so that they understand the opportunities to earn AP courses, college-level classes, while still a student. And also, that person will be sitting at the table at the Department of Ed to help create courses for the Advanced Course Network. So the Advanced Course Network has interest-based courses, high school-credited courses and college-credited courses, but very few of those are coming from the perspective of the needs of students in urban schools. So to have someone in our community who's embedded in our school, understands the needs and the additional layer of support that our second language and our differently-abled students would need to attain the same goals is a really exciting opportunity for us. So we would get that as a member of this grant. That professional development that will help transition our kids from eighth grade into the high school will ensure that they're already on a college track when they walk into our building. So the work that our guidance counselors do, and you're right, Mrs. Kepiscus, the ratio doesn't meet the expectations. Research shows that when you lower that ratio, you increase attendance, you improve SAT scores and you increase the first time, you know...
Excuse me, Chairman? I apologize for interrupting, but W1 Radio requests that if you're talking, if you could turn your camera on because they also stream this.
My camera's not on this computer, I apologize. I would have had it on, sorry about that.
It's just their request, thanks.
Thank you, I apologize, guys. But so that all of those pieces would be part of this grant, to develop those courses to help us. We already have articulation agreements with some of our local colleges. We have teachers in our building who are certified to teach some of our basic English computer classes where kids can get college credits for those, as well as some of the opportunities through our CTE program. But the percentage of kids who that becomes part of their reality is too small. And so if we have an additional counselor who this is what they're going into those Success 101 classes with our ninth graders and talking about opportunities for all kids, not just the kids in AP classes, not just the ones who have met their high school requirements and so they have extra time and can take a college course or for those concurrent courses, but that all of our kids have this opportunity to be on that college track or to help them identify in a way with the action steps that they can make it a reality that will help them after they're finished with high school. We can't limit them to just earning a diploma and this is someone, like I said, who is, you know, the first line at that table as this program grows. The $10 million grant that RIDE got is to increase the opportunities for kids and tend to be embedded in other urban schools so that we do create a more equitable opportunity for them, for all of our kids. Right now, some of those things aren't attainable, but this is not just an AP, college-track program, it is for all of our kids so that that becomes what happens at Wunsoket High School, that those students know what the opportunities are, our pathways are developed and the college courses that they can take and get credit for before they step outside of our high school and into college are available to all of our kids. So I think it's pretty exciting. So with that funds for the counselor that, you know, the committee would have to okay for that partial payment of their salary, we are participating in all of these opportunities and able to tap into the money that RIDE has reserved for professional development and support in writing a more comprehensive, individualized guidance program for our school. I don't know if that answers your questions or if anyone has any follow-up questions.
That absolutely answered my question and meaning that we're going to have someone at that table who represents urban districts, which is sorely lacking, is a tremendous advantage. Trust me, having dealt with people running that program for a number of years on the state level, they're not...
state level, they're not hearing that piece, and that would be an important piece.
Agreed.
It seems that what you've just spoken about, Mrs. Capirelli, distinguishes, uh, this person versus our regular counselors. Where you've got somebody at the RIDE table, uh, to have an impact that will affect our students directly, which I think is a good thing.
Agreed. And I think that it is an opportunity for us, you know, Winsocket High School with some of the grants that we've been able to receive in the last few years, and then turn those into professional development for our adults and opportunities for our kids, starting to set us apart as a school that is on the cutting edge of high school redesign, and this is another piece of that.
Mr. Chairman?
Vice Chair Burke.
Um, Mrs. Capirelli did, did mention something about this position that I don't think I had heard before, and Ms. Kepiscus talked about it in terms of having a seat with the Department of Ed. Now, that's, that's, that adds a different component to my understanding of this position because it seemed to me, my first reading was, this person is doing everything that guidance is already doing. The AP classes, um, the transition from ninth to high school, I mean, we have programs for that already. Um, so I didn't understand why we needed an extra person to do some things that we already were doing. Um, but, but if this position has that state connection that's going to, to bring more things to, to our, to our student body, then I can buy into that.
Yeah, me too.
But, but if it's just, you know, relieving the guidance council of some duties that it should be doing, I, I don't get that. Um, so I'm, I'm hearing what Mrs. Capirelli says, I'm, I'm more favorable for it because I do see it working in a different way than, uh, I guess my original understanding.
Excellent. Are there any additional questions or comments for Dr. McGee or Mrs. Capirelli? Dr. McGee, roll call vote. Uh, you're muted, I believe.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
And that concludes our agenda for this evening, so I'll make a motion to adjourn at eight fourteen PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee, roll call, please.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks for joining us, and remember, it's going to be very cold this weekend. Stay safe and stay warm.